All right, good morning, everybody. Get settled down so we can get started. We are here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Board Session. It's Wednesday, January 29, 2025, and it's 9:02 a.m., and we're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two individuals sign up for public comment, so for the record, you're going to come over to this table for those individuals. And are you going to speak together or individually? I have Susan and Patty. Are you going to come up together?
Individually.
Great, so please come to this chair over here. Susan Smith. And for the record, we'll want you to identify yourself, your name and address. Are we, I'm sorry, is, who's?
One of the, I think.
Well, I'll need you to speak on the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My, my name is Susan Smith.
Okay, good morning, Susan Smith. It's nice to see you.
And what I'm going to ask is that we actually speak together and that Patty speak first, and then I'll speak, if that's okay.
Sure, we're going to give you a total of five minutes together because we have a very long agenda today, so for the record, Susan.
I can see you've got some.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think you're real business, I imagine. We'll need you to state your name and address for the record, each of you, please.
Patty Sloan, 2457 Ellen Lane Northwest, Salem, Oregon.
Thank you. And Susan, you introduced your name, but would you give us your address?
Is 845 Harret Drive.
Great, thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm with Environmental Faith Network, which is a group of about 10 different churches and faiths that are working to educate and help our planet and help us during a time like this. And we're very concerned about what's happening to our people, how the environment is affecting our people. And so we came together today because there was an article in the Statesman Journal a couple of weeks ago, and it said that ReWorld could be purchased by Marion County, that incinerator in Brooks. And, you know, it stopped taking municipal waste and medical waste, it's been decommissioned. And we're concerned because we know that the materials that are emitted by this burner are dangerous to health. And so we were wondering, we know that there's 155,000 metric tons of greenhouse gases that are emitted by the burner. And we know that that's in our airshed, that's carbon dioxide, and that's hot. And we know what's happened in our state with environmental change, and we know what's happened in California with environmental change. So our question to you today is, is the county going to buy that decommissioned burner? And are you going to start it up again?
So public comment is for a time for us to listen, not to interact.
Oh, it's not to interact?
That's right. So we appreciate seeing you and hearing from you today. Is, Susan, did you want to speak on the record?
Yes.
Great.
What I'd like to find out, and even though you won't be giving us the answers now, we'd still like to have these answers put on the public record because we think it's important for people to know what the real status is going to be. And I know that OPB has had some interactions and has provided some information, but I think putting it on the record would be wise. We also have concerns that the county should provide some information, and we'd ask to know what the county and ReWorld will do in terms of decommissioning the facility. And because they're clearly, from the scientific studies, indicates that there's been some deposition of heavy metals and other toxics from the plant, what sort of investigation there is going to be about the site itself in terms of whether or not it needs to be decontaminated? And if so, who's going to be paying for that? Because we want to make sure that this doesn't become a legacy contaminated site. So we'd like the Commission to go ahead and put on the public record exactly what's going to happen out of Brooks I think people deserve to know.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm sure I will mention, you could listen to Brian May, our Environmental Services, and my interview on OPB, and that probably answers your question. Go ahead and listen to that.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, have a great day. All right, we're now going to move on in our agenda to presentations, and the first one is a service award recognition, and I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner Cameron.
Wow, okay, well, where are we going to do this? But I want to say a couple of things first, that we do service awards, and we go around the county to different departments and do services awards. And I believe you had another meeting you were at, but Commissioner Willis and I, this has probably been two or three, two months ago or so, we did service awards out at the Sheriff's Office and watched swearing-in of our new deputies. And there was one of our sergeants that was given a service award that day that works really hard behind the scenes. And if you think about it, you know, in 2000, whatever it was, 2000, I guess it was 20, the elections and what happened, and this last election that we had in 2024, people were concerned about the security of election workers, the security of the building. And this sergeant is in charge of all of that, and making sure that we are safe, that the public that comes into this building is safe, that is around this building is safe, the courthouse and courthouse square. And the three commissioners, we have a little momentum for him, extra above his service award.
Memento?
A memento.
We've got momentum, of course. We will give Mokman all the work.
A little, a little something special, and it's, in fact, Sergeant, why don't you, would you come up front, please, Sergeant Mokman, and we'll all come down.
Okay.
Huh?
Yeah, are we taking, do you want to talk and embarrass him a little? Or are you trying to?
Yeah, absolutely. Not embarrassing, but honoring.
Yeah, so we have, we have this, we have this.
I'm so grateful that I'm not in any awkward photos.
We have this, we have this picture of you when Commissioner Willis and I gave the service award to you over at the Sheriff's Department. But more importantly, I wasn't going to say this, but I am going to say this, you came in after you kept this building safe and everything the day after the election. I'll never forget it, you were standing right over there, and we said, "How are you doing today?" And you said, "I feel great again." And so we, we put this little thing for you, "It's good to see you great again, thank you so much for your community service," and it's signed by all three of us in this little picture for all you do to keep everybody safe in and around the courthouse and courthouse square, Sergeant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause).
Mr. May?
Yes.
So I think we have a very large public safety population here in Marion County. I think there's 13 agencies overall that work really hard to keep our community safe. But what I think the average individual doesn't know is that it takes a lot of work to keep elected officials out of trouble. And my first year as a commissioner, for the first time in Marion County history, we had a pretty robust protest here in front of this building because I got elected. And Todd, you were pretty instrumental in helping me understand kind of what was happening and to help keep the space calm. It never feels good when you're on the receiving end of somebody's anger and frustration, especially as an individual when there's a mass out there having lots of words to say. And you do such a great job of creating a presence of calm and certainty, and I'm really grateful for you. And the humor that you bring along with this really serious work is helpful for those of us that are experiencing uncertain times. So I'm grateful that you're a sergeant here and that you continue to patrol also. I understand that you're out giving people tickets on I-5 once in a while, so watch out, do the speed limit. I don't know about that, but anyway, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Todd. Look, it's, we see the news, we see things going around the country, we see people wanting to be in their government spaces and be safe. And unfortunately, that isn't always the case, but I've never once felt unsafe in this space, and it's largely thanks to you and your team. And so, thank you for your work and thanks for all the sacrifice that you make personally to make sure that all of us are safe when we come into these spaces.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Congratulations again.
You don't have that yet.
I know.
We're going to have to change it with her.
We're going to have to, like, create some AI here.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get them here.
How tired of those pictures? All right. Now we're going to move on to our Strategic Economic Development Corporation, or SEDCOR, of the Mid Willamette Valley Quarterly Report. Sarah.
Good morning, I'm Sarah Green, I'm in the Department of Economic Development, Specialist in the County Services Department. And this morning, we are hosting the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, also known as SEDCOR. They are here to provide their quarterly reports on their work towards business retention and expansion services in Marion County. Right now, Marion County has a grant agreement with SEDCOR, which allows, or I'm sorry, it allocates $160,000 annually from the Economic Development Program funds for SEDCOR to perform traded sector business support services. And this contract is currently set to expire on June 30 of this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kip Morris and Eric Anderson, and they'll be presenting their quarterly report.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Anderson with SEDCOR.
Good morning.
Kip Morris with SEDCOR, good morning, Commissioners.
Just as a reminder, what we do, we leverage public and private partnerships to successfully grow, retain, and attract high-value jobs and capital investment in the region that we serve, Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, and thank you for your support. On the expansion retention and targeted recruitment front, you know, you were directly involved with Hazelnut Growers of Oregon project, and just, we've talked about it here in the past as things progressed, but just to kind of the final note on the first phase of all this, they were approved for, and received notice of approval for their Strategic Reserve Fund grant from the governor. It's actually a forgivable loan for the acquisition of the HGO facility by Northwest Hazelnut, so roughly 70 jobs were saved or created, you know, depending on how you look at that. But, you know, more importantly, dozens of farmers had a place to get their hazelnuts processed this year after harvest. We've talked about natural plant products here in the past, but just to let you know, for the last year or so, they've had a pilot plant going on here in Salem. This is the Oregon Meadow Foam Growers Co-op. They are now fully up and running with respect to their Meadow Foam oil extraction equipment.
What are you saying, meadow?
Meadow Foam.
Meadow Foam.
Yes. It's that, it's that white stuff you see in the fields here, it used to be quite prevalent, then it kind of faded out, and now it's coming back. Also, I think our former team member, Nick, and current team member, I guess, he was the one that recommended Meadow Foam honey to me.
I saw him. He's in the audience.
Yeah, he's here. He was the Meadow Foam honey fan, he was the one that mentioned that to me. So they do make good honey. But it's actually, it's a crop that's grown here, that oils are used for, in cosmetics and makeup. It's mostly exported to Europe and Asia. They, for a long time, were getting all that processed in California, and, you know, the co-op worked for several years to get the facility up and running here, that they are actually now, you know, making the oil here. And hopefully, we'll be adding refining to it. They don't refine it here right now, but they're still adding quite a bit of value to it.
Okay.
We'll hear more about GK Machine shortly. Kip, do you want to cover that, All In Meals?
Yeah, All In Meals, they've done an expansion with equipment, they've added two new trucks and some processing equipment to their facility, and enjoying their expansion opportunities with what they're doing with their meal service. It's pretty unique what they're doing.
And this is, I was going to report on, we have four different projects that, four different groups that we've been talking to around data centers. And I know you're very well aware of the Portland General Electric Long-Term Plan to bring more capacity, more power capacity to this region, and specifically to have an area southeast of Salem at the Bethel Substation. This is, you know, they've been pretty public in their plans when they got the grant to do this. We've been, as a result, contacted by several different real estate firms, existing data center firms.
That's a federal grant, right?
Yeah, good question. I know where you're going, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, are they still going to be able to continue is the question? We have a meeting coming up with them.
Yeah. Right now, as it stands, we're just getting a lot of attention for data center projects. And they're not the kind of, I think you all know, I worked at Pacific Corp. in the past, and, you know, I've worked with data centers, but these are of a scale that I never worked with. They're talking about 300 to 400 acre sites for campuses, billions of dollars in investment. They're not necessarily the big job creators, however, when you start looking at property tax and franchise fees, you know, we're talking, you know, multi-millions of dollars coming into communities. So it's something that's just kind of out there that I wanted you folks to be at least thinking of if you're not already, and.
I have a lot of thoughts on it that we should probably talk about.
Yeah.
Not today.
Not today, but, you know, I wanted, and Commissioner Willis has heard this come up at our Executive Council meetings as well, it's, right now, we don't have the kind of land that they're looking for, we just don't have.
We also don't have the energy.
And we don't have the energy, of course, yeah.
My opinion, just to say it, is we can't put it on the backs of people who live here, and that's what's happening. And it's a very controversial space that people have to be able to afford to live, to turn their lights on and have heat, and right now, they can't.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the energy consumption on the grid for data centers, and that's just not okay. So it'll be an interesting conversation going forward, and I hope that they can do the right thing.
Well, and the question for us is, you know, we don't, we're very, industrial lands are getting somewhat limited, anyway.
Yeah.
You know, I keep referring to it as the 20th anniversary of the industrial lands issue because we've had this conversation 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But, you know, right now, if we have somebody that's looking for 100 acres of land, it's kind of tricky, you know? So we really do need to be starting to think about where the next level of investments are going to go in the future, and, you know, for greenfield sites. You know, just a few years ago, there were still 400 acres at Mill Creek, and everybody saw lots of green space out there and said, "Oh, we've got tons of land." And, you know, now there's one 50-acre site left out there, and it's owned by a developer, but, you know, we are promoting that one and marketing it, but when that one's gone, it's going to be a challenge for us, the region.
Yeah.
On the innovation and entrepreneurship front, you know, we held our locally grown supply chain event on November 7, and that's, as a reminder, that's when we try to bring farmers together with processors and make, you know, those connections so that our local processors are buying things, trying to identify things that are local to purchase, as well as having our growers grow for what the processors are looking for here in the region. Our partners at AgLaunch out of Memphis came out, and we gave them a tour, and we visited some of our, you know, projects we wanted to highlight as far as, you know, kind of interesting things that are happening in the region from an agriculture perspective. So, you know, both natural plant products, Northwest hazelnuts were on that, and the folks were very kind to give some time to talk to these folks about what they're doing in Memphis and what we're trying to do here. Also visited Canopy, which is, if you haven't had a chance to go up there, it's a pretty impressive, that's the automated greenhouse company that has been working with GK to launch, and they've been getting some good publicity and some good funding and investment coming in as a result, and that's just up in Donald. We continue to work with our Launch Mid Valley Regional Innovation Hub, this is funding that came from Business Oregon to help spur more entrepreneurial ecosystem development. We did our first pub talk with the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network at the end of October, had over 100 people show up for that. We've developed a series of coffee clubs for entrepreneurs and small businesses that gathers people together in a community and gives them opportunities to lean on each other, learn from outside, you know, speakers about resources. Right now, we've got, in Marion County, coffee clubs, we've had a couple going on in Salem. Staton is, I don't know if we've had one here, it's on, yes, we have had one in Staton. Woodburn's on the list, and Mount Angel, we just started talking to them about one as well. And we've got a startup boot camp happening this weekend in McMinnville, but there are 32 entrepreneurs that have signed up for that, and that's a three-day kind of immersive, you know, getting a business plan and working on your pitch, and then delivering your pitch on Sunday to.
Is that the, is that what Mike is doing?
Yes, yeah, this is all done with Mike, Mike White and Maliewa are contractors in this, and we just met yesterday, so I've got some updated numbers as far as our last quarter. They've served 268 companies in the various things that they're working on, about $3 million in investment funding, and 14 events, and 246 people have attended them, so.
Is that like region-wide, or is that Marion County specific?
That's region-wide, yeah, I'm going to ask them for some breakouts, so we know. I believe most of the activity, there's been a bit of activity in McMinnville area. We're just starting a work, a coffee club in Newburgh, so there'll be two, and, but most of it's been either in Marion County or in Yamhill County.
Great.
And of course, that's funded by Business Oregon through their Regional Innovation Hub programming, and after June 30, you know, we're hoping that these coffee clubs are trying to encourage them to be sustainable and find local businesses and organizations to kind of take ownership of it once we've kind of set the infrastructure for it, but we will be hoping for some additional funding. Want to talk a little bit about Construction Alliance?
Yeah, excited to talk about this SEDCOR Construction Alliance, the Gilbert House project. We're looking at putting roofs on the Gilbert House, the Rockenfield House, and the Parish House, all three of them. They're all in need, it's a good opportunity for the Construction Alliance to come together and to provide some support locally and to help reconstitute something and preserve something that we've all enjoyed for a really long time. Really excited to be a part of that project.
And I know there's interest in workforce housing, so I'll give you a little bit of an update, we've been holding our roundtables, we have a contract with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments to be reaching out to employers and gathering their information on, you know, where workforce housing is as an interest for them and as a, as far as being able to attract and retain workers. As we continue to do these roundtables, we're working towards a Regional Workforce Housing Summit that you will be invited to, and hopefully will be able to participate in. I said, in April, we now have a date, it's April 21st, it'll be at the Eola Campus of Shrek of Community College, and looking forward to a really interesting conversation. I think, Commissioner Willis, I think, has seen the Missing Middle Housing Fund, Nathan Wildfire came and spoke at a couple of our board meetings at SEDCOR, but the model that they use as far as getting people excited about innovation and workforce housing around the state and around the country, and how we can get people engaged, developers, communities engaged here, it's, it is really kind of innovative, really motivating. Cover your metrics report.
Yeah, so I've been really busy with a lot of community visits these last few months. We're, a lot more engagement up the canyon and North Marion, that's helped us to facilitate the engagement with the Launch Mid Valley, helping that to get constituted. Business visits are up, we've participated with business retention and expansion surveys with the city of Silverton, and then also we're engaged with the North Marion Business Service Alliance for their economic opportunity analysis that's coming up right now. A number of SEDCOR events, this is normal, we're known for our events and being a part of that in a number of different ways. And committee meetings and trainings, trainings was a little bit down, I think just mostly because of the holiday schedule, but the committee meetings definitely was very up, and community visits as well.
And just a couple other updates, I've reported before that Oregon Business Council had their Leadership Summit, I know I saw Commissioner Bethel there, didn't know if I, I may have seen you there too.
I did see you passing in the doorway.
Pardon me?
I remember seeing you, I'm like, "Did I see you?"
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, there was a lot of people there.
There were selfies involved, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
Yeah, you were pushing me out of yours. But one of the things I'd been working on with the Oregon Business Council is this, is a, I guess, a de facto subcommittee looking, they called it the Food and Beverage Council, but it was food and beverage manufacturers and partners from around the state, really looking to identify what some of the issues are that are facing food and beverage entrepreneurs and existing, existing businesses. This has resulted in a legislative concept, 24, 54, and it was, it's always nice to see when they come up with these concepts, you actually see things that we talked about in these meetings. So a couple of the things that they're looking at is, you know, more of a domestic trade program for Oregon food and beverage companies, you know, we, we have a lot of great, unique businesses here that are producing cool things, but if they don't want to, you know, sell it to Asia, we don't really have a lot of resources to help them grow domestically. So that's one priority. And also with food and beverage competitiveness, looking at Oregon versus other states and what we can be doing to be more competitive, that's everything from resources for automation and co-manufacturing spaces, co-packing spaces. You mentioned Mike White before, I mean, his barbecue sauce had been, until recently, produced in New York, because it was actually cheaper for him to find a place and have it shipped here.
Yeah.
From New York. And then capital availability for food and beverage, I mean, as funding becomes available for, for lack of a better term, the sexier things like semiconductors, there's been less for the more traditional industries. We've bucked the trend a little bit here in Marion County, particularly with some really high-profile food, you know, with Don Poncho and hazelnut growers, which has been nice to be able to report to folks that we're actually seeing these kind of economic activities in that industry here, and also some really strong startups. But, you know, the traditional resources just aren't there for it, so we'll continue to follow that one. We, we, the Shrek of Community College Center for Business and Industry hosted the Business Oregon Commission in December, which gave, they gave me an opportunity to speak to them for about a half hour on what's going on in the region, what SEDCOR does, what some of our issues and challenges are, also a chance to thank them for their support, because we had, they had been funding our Latino program, our Innovation Hub, and it was right, I think, almost the same day as the governor's letter about Oregon, about Hazelnut Growers of Oregon, so it was a good chance to be able to thank them for their support there as well. And a couple upcoming events, our Ag Breakfast is February 21st at the Shrek of the Ag Complex. We are still planning an economic forum in May, we don't have a specific date for that yet, and a lot of folks like the golf tournament, and that's.
It just got added to my calendar.
Okay, good, June 6.
It, I mean, while we get invited to a lot of golf tournaments, it's the most entertaining golf tournament of probably the 20 that I attend every year.
That's nice to hear.
Last year's was probably the best, it was like, what, a board game theme or something?
Yeah.
And every, every whole sponsor came out in, it was awesome.
Yeah.
Also, I had no idea there were so many board games. And it was fun, and it didn't rain.
I feel like I should just give a shout-out to your county council for doing a great job with Hungry Hippos last year.
That's funny. I remember, I was actually very good at that game.
So it's Battle of the Bands is the theme this year, so.
Oh, boy.
Should, should be quite interesting, but.
Every time I get on a team, they ask us to dress up, I can't imagine what we're going to look like this year.
It'll be entertaining for those of us who staff it, too, so that's.
I think it's great, it, you know, you get out on a Friday afternoon or Friday morning, I don't know what time of day it is, but to be with, you know, other leaders and business owners to interact, and by the way, I'm terrible at golf, I don't know why anybody wants to on their team, but.
I think that's part of the fun.
I'm awful, like, if you're going for last place, I win it every time, and I'm not mad at that.
Important thing is that you get out and have fun, that's it.
That's right, there should be a prize for last place.
So that's the comments I had, the formal comments, I mean, this is what we, our regional identity, you know, we want to be a great place to start and grow a business, equitable and inclusive business community, and a region with unique strengths in agriculture, food, manufacturing, and technology. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. Eric, when you, the last slide, I don't know if you can go backwards, when you were talking about food and beverage, you're talking about manufacturing, correct?
Yes.
Not necessarily retail.
we want to be a great place to start and grow a business, equitable and inclusive business community and a region with unique strengths in agriculture, food, manufacturing, and technology. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Eric, when you, the last slide, I don't know if you can go backwards. When you're talking about food and beverage, you're talking about manufacturing, correct?
Yes.
Not necessarily retail?
No, yeah, food and beverage manufacturing.
Thank you.
You know, the, the, interestingly, I think, at the summit, the person that kind of moderated that panel.
He was focused on the retail and the branding.
He said it's slightly disappointing. You know, we have offered.
I wasn't disappointed as a former restaurateur, he was on, he was on target.
They take feedback, I've given it to them every year, so.
They did, I mean, he did tie it together, and particularly the event afterwards, I mean, they were talking a lot. Todd Davidson from Travel Oregon was there, and he, I think, did a really nice job kind of summarizing that that.
I think a Tillamook cheese and, you know, all that stuff and how you can bring that into the retail side. And people, when they come here, there's some very, there's some big disadvantages on the retail side between other states, you know. I'm not going to go into the politics behind that, but you go to Arizona and you get really good service in a restaurant. Why? Well, you know, there's a tip wage there. And here, you know, you've got to, you've got to put a server on the floor to handle twelve tables. Where down there, they can handle four or five because you can afford to do it. So, so there's some, there's some image branding that we have problems with on the retail side. And those flow into, I think, even the manufacturing side because of some of the disadvantages and the handcuffs that we put on people in Oregon.
Certainly.
I'm done.
And actually, I think also the, when you talk about branding, I mean, I think a lot of small food producers, particularly where they really need the outlets to kind of build their brand and to get that, the momentum to get into grocery stores. They start at the restaurants. I mean, if the restaurants are highlighting locally grown, locally made products, just like the, you know, beers and wines. I mean, I think, so it is part of the ecosystem. I was just, I think we had spent so much time concentrating on the larger employers and, but I think ultimately the point got across. And the woman that owns Hot Mama Salsa, that was on the panel, she's participated in some of our events, actually. She came down to our Angel Food event last year. Very, well, very eloquently understands as a, as a small manufacturer how hard it is to not just get a product developed, but to get it made, and she's sticking her neck out buying kind of her own kind of co-packing facility, working with some partners, I believe, and, you know, kind of walking the talk. But I think she was a really good ambassador for what we're trying to do as a company that can grow.
Thank you, thank you.
You have anything?
Nope.
Thanks for the work you're doing.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
We'll see it for sure on the twenty-first.
Good.
Wasn't this Sarah's first presentation?
I'm, I mean, maybe in her current role.
At board session?
Yeah.
In your current role? All right.
It's nice to see you, we're glad you're here. All right, we're gonna move on to the Travel Salem Annual and Quarterly Report. Kelly and Angie.
Get our presentations shifted.
Okay.
You know, just for the record, Madam Chair, just if people are watching, these two presentations are probably, probably the two biggest, largest grants that we give out every year to these two organizations out of our Economic Development Funds. That's why they come in together, just so people that are watching would understand why we're doing SEDCOR and Travel Salem on a quarterly basis.
It just seemed like it was actually a wonderful timing, or maybe not for your massive agenda, I'm not sure.
It's okay, it happens once in a while. Last week, we were in here for like no time at all, and the week before even less, so we're just making it up and down. Nice to see you, Angie.
You as well.
Excuse me.
I'll do a quick introduction, my name is Kelly Wees, I'm the Economic Development Program Manager in our Community Services Department. And just like Commissioner Cameron said, we're here because we have an opportunity here from Travel Salem to give their report on their grant agreement that we have with them for the work they're doing to support tourism, marketing, and destination development. And I guess with that quick intro, I'll turn it over to Angie.
Thank you, good morning, Commissioners, and thanks for having me here. I have limited time with you and I want to respect your agenda today, so I'm gonna breeze through a lot of content. Interrupt me as you'd like, and of course, would love to have questions as well. So we're gonna talk about our annual report and go over some quick highlights from last fiscal year. More than three-quarters of a billion dollars generated by the tourism industry for our community here. That's incredible growth, that represents about three-point-three percent growth year-over-year. And three-point-three percent might feel like not a whole lot, but that's more than twenty-five million dollars in growth. So the industry is thriving, to say the least. We employ over seven, seventy-seven hundred people, and that's what they would look like if they're sitting in one room. So that job, that job diversity in the community and that, those dollars flowing through our small businesses and our communities is really critical. We promote about fifteen-hundred events every single month. When I first took this job here almost eighteen years ago, I remember people saying, there's nothing to do here, there's nothing to do here. Well, there's fifteen-hundred events happening here, it's incredible. We supported sixty relocation inquiries that come from individuals and businesses. And our visitor information network in seven different locations supported more than eighteen, one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand folks this last year. We did a visitor survey, an intercept survey, at all these locations that are listed here on the screen. I highlighted some specific ones in Marion County, we really want to thank our partners for helping us collect that data. Our primary visitors still come from Oregon, Washington, California, and are average age of fifty-three, so they're primarily boomers. But the travel party size is three, daily, day party spend is about two-hundred-and-fifty-six. It's that overnight party spend that we want to just continue to push on. If we can convert day visitors into overnight visitors, the money they leave in the destination is significantly more impactful. They're still primarily using our hotels, but they also stay a lot with visiting, you know, their family and friends. So visiting family and relatives is a very important demographic that we do go after. Here are some quick highlights on what they're doing when they're here. So on the left-hand side, that little chart on the left are the events they're attending. If they're Salem-specific or they're outside Salem, they're highlighted in different colors. So on the event side, the Salem events are really driving outside visitation. These are folks that are traveling more than fifty miles away and have a higher likelihood of staying overnight here. On the right-hand side, we're looking at our attractions, and that shifts to county. The county is driving a lot of visitation through the attractions that you see there. Our wineries, Enchanted Forest, Detroit Lake, Silver Falls, you could name it, a lot of robust opportunities here, it's wonderful. Let me know if you have any questions or want to see any more data on that. On the PR side, we generated almost one-hundred-and-twenty-three million impressions. That's a three-point-three percent increase there as well, reaching all these different writers, editors, and bloggers to promote this destination. Here are some samples of the types of content that we're driving. So we focused on Brighton Bush and Detroit Lake for a travel and leisure story that reached about four-point-eight million people. If we had to purchase that space, it would have cost us thirty-eight thousand dollars. We promoted Detroit Lake and Willamette Forest through the Channel Two and got a significant amount of exposure there. And then Lonely Planet, we promoted Enchanted Forest and Silver Falls, so great exposure for the destination. On the social media side, we produced more than fifty unique pieces of content, video is still king. So those are some of the videos that we produced, and obviously we focused on a lot of content from Marion County. Six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand video views resulted from that content. On the social media side, continuing to promote the destination, top-performing social sites are Instagram and our Facebook. Tons of visibility there, again, we're trying to hit consumers in the funnel of decision-making, the inspiration that they have and when they're trying to decide where they're gonna travel, all the way down to when they actually are on the ground in the destination and what they want to see and do while they're here. So all of this is driving that.
Angela, the last slide, you had Brighton Bush Hot Springs, did you have a video of people walking around up there?
Please don't show it if you do.
I'm teasing.
Thank you.
I had to, I had to give you something to laugh at while you're going so fast.
I know, well, and actually, since he's interrupted you, could you go back to your slide three that talks about the key performance measures?
Key performance measures?
Have you guys done an analysis on what inflation has done to the overall investment or spending? You said that the EEI record is surpassed in twenty-twenty-two by three-point-three percent?
Yeah.
And what's the inflation impact there?
I don't know the answer to that, that's actually a really good question.
I'd really love it if you guys could dive into that, because I think what we're, I mean, this is all great data and it's, it's fun to see that our community appears to be thriving. And what we're hearing from the industry is the constraint of inflation.
Squeeze.
Yeah, the squeeze, as he says. And we, I would hope that your organization could help us generate what that looks like and the narrative that we can be producing as elected officials to talk about the impact of inflation. It's not just at, you know, purchasing milk and eggs, it's, it's across the board.
One-hundred percent.
I'm, I'm really interested in the challenges and gaps, so we can really work towards overcoming that. This is, you know, going forward, if you can help us identify that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I'd love to have more dialogue and sort of insights from you guys as well. We do know that the travel patterns continue to shift, so during COVID and right after COVID, there was this revenge travel, right? People had kind of been pent up, demand for trying to get back out and exploring. We're still seeing that, so folks are traveling in record numbers. The airports, the TSA numbers are insane, so we know that more people continue to travel, the spend is higher. So I don't know where that happy medium is, but I know that inflation certainly does impact it. The cost of airfare is crazy as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're definitely experiencing that, we'll look and see what we can find for you.
And I heard, I heard on, I think it was the radio or television news, that cruises are seeing a record booking this next year, cruises. Last place I want to be on is a big boat with a bunch of thousands of people, but.
Noted, we will not eat that for Christmas.
Yeah, it impressed me that cruises have come back that fast since COVID, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, the patterns of travel have changed too, what folks are actually doing. So there's this sort of remote work travel now, like if you take your, you know, a vacation with your family for three weeks, let's just say. Your first work, you're on vaca, first week you're on vacation, the second week you're working remotely, but you're still on vacation technically. And then the third week, you're with your family. So, you know, time in a destination is lengthening, and so it's just, there's some interesting opportunities and challenges with all of that that we're trying to use the data to help point us in the right direction.
Yeah. I'm looking at the state of the industry slide, and it says in twenty-twenty-three Marion County had over two million visitors?
Let's see, which slide are we on here?
This is page eleven.
It's eleven on our slides.
It looks like this, it has the blue banner on the top.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely, that's gotta be in here somewhere. Oh, that isn't in my slides, it's in your, in the annual report though, the state of the industry?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Where does that number come from, what's the source of that data?
So Dean Runyon, they're economists on the global scale, they specifically focus on tourism and the economic impacts of tourism in local economies. And so Travel Oregon actually commissions these studies through Dean Runyon, and so we get that data directly from them. They have a thousand different ways they cut and slice information, employment figures, travel visa spending in a market, hotel room nights, all of those things to get to the numbers that they, that we share with you essentially.
Okay, could, could you send me the data underneath that? I just, there's what, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in Marion County? That seems like a super-high number of visitors, so I'm wondering, I guess that, yeah.
Well, and the question is, is like, is it individual targets or is it the same target counted multiple times? It'd be interesting to dive into that data.
Yeah, if someone visits the destination more than once, they're gonna be counted more than once. If the travel party size is also increased to about three, that means that each party is expanding as well. So more people are coming, they're bringing their, their family, they're bringing their, you know, with them, so, yeah, definitely. But I can, we can get you that raw data and be happy to meet with you to kind of discuss it as well. Let's go to, so we did a, our top-performing video in social media was for the Wooden Shoe Tulip Festival. Almost ninety thousand views for that, fifty thousand views on Instagram, so that is such a critical.
Was it to determine whether that kid was sitting in a barrel that looks like a skunk or a cow? I can't tell. It's a cow, I mean, that would make sense, but it also looks like a skunk.
It does. I wish I had time, I would, I'd love to show you some of this, these content pieces that we create, because they're so well-done and it really does speak to the value and the quality of this destination and the uniqueness of it. Our content creators are amazing. Encourage you to follow us on social if you don't. On the digital marketing side, through our Facebook posts, our blogs, our consumer newsletters, our Google ads that we do on our website, as well as some KPTV advertising, we are, have a weather cam finally on top of the Holman Hotel here, and so we get a lot of exposure on that. But we're finally able to track when a person sees one of these posts or ads, all the way to when they book in the market. We never had that type of transparency before, but technology has really opened that up for us. So we're able to see year-over-year percentage changes, and you can see that our digital impressions in those spaces, eleven-and-a-half million. Our visits on our website directly related to that content is almost two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand visits to our website, and it generated thirty-two hundred room nights and more than half a million dollars in hotel revenue. So it's wonderful that we can actually measure that and track the growth of that over time, huge growth year-over-year there. On the Expedia side, we run a very unique campaign there. We are not actually a banner ad on Expedia. Travel Oregon retargets folks who are searching for destinations in Oregon with email. And the email has content and stories and features, and we pay to be a part of that retargeting email. And that, that program is incredibly successful as well, more than sixteen million impressions through that. Generated seventeen-and-a-half thousand room nights just from that program, representing about two-point-seven million dollars in hotel revenue. So really successful retargeting campaign there. Our visitor guide continues to be a really hot item, print does not die in this space. People want a printed, physical visitor guide when they come to the market. We produce one-hundred-and-twenty thousand of those and distribute them to more than eight-hundred locations in Oregon, California, Washington, British Columbia, and across the world. Iron Man, I probably don't need to say much about this, but it continues to be a huge driver in our community. It, it continues to build our brand, it generates almost fifteen-and-a-half million dollars over that weekend of folks coming to visit here. On the strategic side, destination development, Resilient Headwaters, we continue to be a collaborator and partner with them and also provide funding for that initiative, I know that you guys do too, and we really want to thank you for that. We also continue our work in the Economic Development Consortium space, where we bring together tourism economic development leaders across the region to talk about pain points, opportunities, and collaboration. Our commercial air service returned last year and it's doing very well on the Avelo side. We had fifty-five thousand folks fly and on five-hundred flights, and we're, almost half of those folks are visitors coming into the market and exploring the destination. So our Burbank flight from Salem to Burbank continues to be the best launch to date for the Avelo carrier. On Q1 side, so this Q1 is July through September of twenty-four, yes, twenty-four. Our Wine Country License Plate Program, we were able to secure another eight-year contract with Travel Oregon on that. And we have two broadcast campaigns that we're driving right now. One of them is in Seattle that is currently running, and then we have one that's gonna be in Dallas, Texas, starting in March. Our research and data from the folks coming to this area shows they're coming from those two specific markets for wine tourism. So that's why we're targeting those two destinations. And our commercials drive to our website, so folks can actually plan their trip here. Some quick highlights for you guys on the public relations side and our social media side. Again, you can continue to see the diversity of content that we're promoting and all the different types of media exposure that we're getting. On Foxnews.com, we had an article, a travel guide, Seven Wonders of the Beaver State. And we focused on Silver Falls State Park and just a bunch of other opportunities there. On the social media side, Mount Angel Oktoberfest and Fry's Dalia Gardens. Q2 highlights, our website, we recently translated it into multiple languages, I think we have eight now. We're seeing about almost a thousand translations happening each month, and that continues to grow. Spanish is the highest requested translation of our content, with Germany falling right behind that. We conducted our Tourism Summit Awards and had a great turnout, lots of educational opportunities there for our stakeholders. And on the PR and social media side, again, this is October through December, some great exposure for the county. In Northwest Magazine, we featured Mount Angel Oktoberfest. Portland Monthly, we highlighted the Brighton Bush Hot Springs again, hopefully decent content, let's just say, I'm sure it was. On YahooLifestyle.com, we were able to focus Deepwood Gardens and the Silverton Christmas Market. So you can see all of that stuff highlighted there. That reach is really important, and we are able to track it now directly to dollars being spent in the market, which is wonderful. Lastly, we just completed our new strategic plan. I want to thank all of you that participated in that process and helped give us your, your vision, your ideas. That's been built into a new five-year strategic plan that will kick off in July. It is gonna be divvied up into these specific areas here. On the externally focused side, we are. On the externally focused side, we are looking at destination marketing and destination management. Internally, we're always looking to optimize our organization. All of this work that's highlighted here is specifically to increase visitor-related economic impact in our communities, to drive visitors to our local businesses and to engage our community in these conversations. That's the destination development side of the work that we're doing, the destination management side. We want our residents to be actively involved in the types of businesses we recruit here, the types of things we promote. Do they support certain types of sporting events that we're bringing here? Do they support certain types of large conventions that we're bringing here? We just secured again the Antique Truck Historical Society, which will be going to the Antique Powerland. This will be the second time they've come here. About five thousand people come here. They bring their trucks. They have to stay in our hotels. It drives an incredible amount of impact here. So we still want to make sure that our residents support the type of work that we're doing and that they have a voice in the, in our outreach and the things that we're recruiting into the market. I want to thank you so much for your time this morning, and I'd love to have any other questions or comments.
Thanks, Angie. Commissioner, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure. Thank you. Last one, as I, I went back to your Salem Marion Polk attractions in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And Kaiser Station surpassed Woodburn Outlets, one point six million. No wonder how many of those were In-N-Out Burger fans.
That's a true thing.
Just you.
No, no, no. Seriously, I mean, Woodburn Outlet Centers used to be number one.
Do you know what we're getting at, at the Kaiser Station in the near future? It's a very big store. I don't care about the hotel. I mean, I care about you, the hotel.
What was it?
We're getting a boot barn.
A what?
A boot barn. It's a very big country western store. We have to go all the way up to Woodburn or Wilsonville to go. It's the nearest one. And I was just there in December, and they were so excited to tell me, while they're experiencing significant challenges to get there, they're coming. That's huge, because while I was in that Wilsonville store, I saw eight people from St. Paul. Like, you know, we're having to go outside of our area to get access to Western tack and different things, because for some reason we haven't had a, a store that's thrived, other than Double H, which is great. But it's, it's, this boot barn is more robust. So it's supposed to be here sometime later this year. I'm personally very excited about that.
One point six.
Well, and you know, the, the importance of that retail cannot be overlooked. I mean, folks travel from Asia and all over the world to come for tax-free shopping here in Oregon.
Sure.
And so the tour buses that come down and bring folks, I mean, that is part of a market that we're also trying to develop. So that's great to know.
It's become a very, like, my, my teenagers go there. It's now an outdoor mall, because the malls have lost a lot of the appeal. Like when the Willamette Town Center or whatever it's called now, kind of went to an outside model instead of inside model. Other than the new bookstore that's over there, like my teens still drive all the way to Kaiser Station, because their stores of choice are now over there. They be located from downtown and Lancaster. Whoever's doing their marketing and recruitment for their stores, locations, doing a really good job of acquiring a space for youth to congregate, which also causes problems for law enforcement. But still, you know, we could enhance some of that space to prevent them from getting in trouble. But it's actually, other than the weirdest travel design I've ever experienced in my life.
You mean that, how to get In-N-Out and go around you?
Yeah, it is. I don't know what architect came up with that, but I would love to take them to coffee.
Madam Chair, the only reason I brought the one point six and In-N-Out Burger up. I mean, it's great that Kaiser Station is, is getting more visitors than the Owl and Mall. But yesterday I, I met with the executive director of Family Building Blocks, and she told me that the In-N-Out Burger Foundation gave them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's great.
For their building. So these, these companies that are coming in and doing really well are also giving back to our local community. So I just thought that was really cool.
Yeah.
And I just looked it up and it's on there. It's on there. They're featuring Family Building Blocks on their.
Website?
Website.
That's really great.
For their.
Chamau Station's getting the hotel, is that right? Like on the south, Chamau, Chamau Station?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just met with Chairwoman Pigsley recently and learned about their project growth, which is.
I'm not familiar with the timeline. Do you know what the timeline is on that?
I didn't ask her.
Okay.
You know, it takes, you know, building permits and all kinds of studies in Oregon to do, to create any type of a building. And I know they've run into some issues, but that's to be foreseen, I suppose. The last hotel that went up over there, you probably remember the nightmare that they went through because of the industry challenges that they faced. And it, I was the chamber director at the time, and they went from like groundbreaking and then like a nine-month delay before they could actually.
At the Holiday Inn.
The Express, yeah. It was horrible and very costly, but they've obviously figured it out and been very successful.
Doing very well, yeah. This other hotel is, is going to really do a lot.
Yeah, and there's a restaurant and other, like, activities that are going to be at that hotel. Yeah, I think it's going to really improve that environment. Hopefully, it won't back up High Five. The other day, there was an issue over there with some train arms that kept people in traffic for over an hour. You know, things that you can accomplish. I mean, Commissioner Cameron can lower tides and stop trains. Maybe he should work on that.
He can.
Well, only when Angie calls me.
Right.
I do want to, I do want to make sure that the people from Woodburn that are in the room today, that they are second place now on visitors, right? Did you know that, Frank?
No.
Yeah, he works on today.
He's going to get back to work. He's going to get back to Woodburn and start banging on the table.
They improved their traffic issue in Woodburn.
Oh, yeah.
For those outlets. Kaiser could take, well, it's not Kaiser. It's ODOT, but at the end of the day, if you can fix ODOT, then you could do anything.
That's true.
Thanks for being here, Angie.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year.
You, they, thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Cameron, would you mind? Oh, is it your turn, Colm?
I think it is my turn, Madam Chair, but if Commissioner Cameron wants to.
No, right ahead.
All right.
Okay, Madam Chair. I move the consent agenda. Under Assessor's Office, approve a sole source determination to establish a contract with Eagleview DBA Pictometry International Corporation to provide aerial imagery services for a two-year period. Under Board of Commissioners, Board Committee Appointment, Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, approve orders appointing Sean Baird as chair and Kyle Amesbury as vice chair to Marion County Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, with terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Under Finance, approve a quick claim deed to transfer ownership of tax account five-three-five-five-one-six from Marion County to Janice J. Hayes, the adjacent property owner. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number two to the contract for services with Peace of Mind Cleaning LLC to add fifty thousand dollars for a new contract total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to continue to provide janitorial services at various county locations on a scheduled-as-needed-and-on-call-emergency basis through February thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Under Public Works, receive notice of the hearings officer's decision approving zone change case number twenty-four dash zero zero five, Bill Stanley on behalf of Don Edwards. Receive notice of the hearings officer's decision approving administrative review case number twenty-four dash zero one nine, Sharon K. Vaughn. Receive notice of the hearings officer's recommendation to approve zone change comprehensive plan case number twenty-four dash zero zero four, Woodry Properties LLC, and schedule a public hearing for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Receive notice of the hearings officer's decision approving partition case number twenty-four dash zero zero five, Mary Ann Taylor. Approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, in which an estimated one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars will utilize federal funds. An estimated fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars will utilize state funds, and an estimated ninety-seven thousand, thirteen dollars will utilize county funds for the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Approve the incoming funds transportation safety office grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one dollar and nineteen cents for various Marion County transportation safety programs through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our first item under Action Business Services. Tamara and Terri are going to come forward and talk about our public improvement agreement with Woodburn Construction.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tamara Getch, Director of Business Services, and today we have a public improvement construction project that we'd like you to consider for the bid award to Woodburn Construction's CMGC LLC. This would allow for our medical examiner to move its current location, which is in our health, one of our older health buildings, move them out of that facility and into a new location on the same campus. The medical examiner, examiner performs administrative services in this office location. And then this construction contract would enable us to put a multipurpose function to a building that's on that site. One half would be to perform medical examiner services. The other half would remain the same and provide juvenile services. The two would not, would not interact, but would be separated. Terri Stoner, our facilities manager, can talk about the details of the construction project. The total for this contract is four thou- four, four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we are really excited about moving this forward, because with this capital project that we're, that we have approved to do this work, by moving out the, the medical examiner's office, we can then refurbish the first floor of the, the old health building and move some more health programs into that building. So this is, this is going to move forward two projects at the same time with your approval on this. We're hoping to get started on it this spring and have a move-in this early this fall.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions? Other than for the record, this is not where any bodies go.
No bodies.
There was a question about that. But why would we be putting medical examiners and bodies anywhere near kids? We are not doing that. It's just an office. It's just an office space where they get to do their paperwork and clean up after any incidents. So.
Correct.
I was curious, other than Commissioner Willis, who asked that question last week.
I got good clarity on what this space is going to be used for.
Yes. Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, thank you. Terri, you mentioned that we will do these simultaneously. Does this budget include, okay.
No, this.
No, that's, that'll be separate?
Yeah. It's, it won't be simultan- simultaneously.
You've got to move them first.
We have to move them first, yeah. But with moving them, that we can move the other one forward too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a public improvement agreement with Woodburn Construction, CMGC LLC, for the amount of four hundred and fifty-four thousand for the relocation and remodel of the new site location in Marion County Medical Examiner's Office through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to Community Services, where Sarah and Kip are going to join us back at the microphone. Kip, are you coming forward? We're going to talk about the resolution approving a rural industrial property tax exemption for GK Machine.
So this morning, we have.
Be sure to introduce yourself. Sorry, for the record, again.
Sarah Cutley, Economic Development Specialist in Community Services.
Thank you.
Kip Morris, Sedcor.
So we have a resolution for you to consider approval of an application to the Rural Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program for GK Machine in the Donald Hubbard area. So the, the Rural Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program serves as a tool to support our businesses that are making large capital investments and increasing employment in our community by allowing a three-year exemption for property taxes on any new qualifying improvements for the business. This is the second application for GK Machine, which was submitted to our Assessor's Office. Their first application was for land and a new building, which was approved last year. This new application that has been submitted, reviewed, is for new machinery and equipment to go in that building. And it estimated close to five point four million on new taxable property value. At the conclusion of the exemption period, the property taxes on this site are estimated to be around seventy-six thousand dollars per year. And as a part of their application, GK Machine has indicated they will be hiring an additional eighteen employees as part of the agreement with an estimated final count of one hundred and ninety-four full-time employees working at the location outside of Donald. If granted, GK Machine would be responsible for following up with the taxing, taxing entities that are subject to and receive support letters from at least seventy-five percent of those entities. And so we have Kip here. There's also a representative from GK Machine. If you have any questions about it.
I have some questions. Do you want to come forward? Sarah, what were the other taxing districts that provided support for this? Do you know?
I haven't yet.
I don't, because I. We don't have them yet. Have we?
They have to go out. After we approve it, they have to go out and get their support.
I misunderstood you. Thanks. Hi, for the record, would you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Connie Lindsey from GK Machine.
Hi, Connie. Thanks for being here. So this would be the third extension that we've offered to GK Machine since I've been a commissioner, is that right?
I believe so.
I was just curious. I think it's great. I just am curious if you can tell me the scale of employees that were able to be brought on into our community because, as a result of this.
Yes, we are currently hiring twenty-five positions are listed on IMAG. These positions are two engineering positions, draftsman, CNC machinist, fabricators, material handlers, powder coders, everything we need to run a factory.
So they're pretty decent wage-paying positions.
Yeah.
I went on a tour of the factory a year ago? No, wait, it wasn't three years ago. It can't have been. Anyway, it was pretty fascinating. I'm interested to go back out there and see the expansion once it's all settled. Is there anything that you want to share with us about the project and the impact on the community and kind of the why behind the growth?
Um, well, the agricultural industry is changing tremendously. Robotics is becoming state-of-the-art equipment. We are on the cutting edge of developing those types of equipment. Over the last several months, we've been contacted by over six or seven different international companies to build agricultural equipment here in the United States. So our business is booming and we need to, to grow, to keep up with it.
That's very exciting.
It is.
I'm glad that you want to do it here in Marion County. You have any questions?
No, I think it's awesome. Thank you for what you're doing.
Madam Chair, I will say this, because, you know, people look at, okay, what, what are we doing here? And there's about a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar property tax savings over three years to a company. But also, besides the employees and the, and the salaries and the taxes that come from them don't come to us. They go to the, whatever that building is next to us called the Capitol. But in addition to all those things, you're investing five point three million dollars. So there's jobs being created from the investment that you're making right away upfront for the equipment and things that are being brought in. So there's a whole, this is, we're the only county that does this program still, I believe. We worked hard to get this, this thing done many years ago, probably eight years ago. And I know Nick's here, and he's, he's been responsible for several of these projects. This is such a great thing that we can do this for companies that want to stay here, because there's not a lot of tools. And, you know, it's, it's easier, and I know Eric, you know, Group and Kip, they're always looking, how do we recruit new people? It's easier to keep your regular customers than it is to go out and get new customers in any business. And I really appreciate the work that Sedcor does to help the existing businesses on retention. And this is, all we do is approve this. You got to go out and do the work with the other taxing communities to get their support.
Yeah.
But once that investment is made, and three years from now, there's, you know, whatever, an estimate of seventy-seven thousand dollars are going to flow into the property tax coffers that help the school district and helps the county and the cities wherever you're at. You're in the city limits of Donalds, aren't you, or are you outside?
We're in both right now. We are, our retail location and admin office is still in one location. And our new facility is just outside Donald's city limits.
Okay. So you benefit the city too. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, of course. Kip, do you want to say anything, since you're sitting here nicely?
I think it's wonderful what they're doing. I talk GK up all the time. They're a really stellar example, not only of the use of the programs that we have in Marion County, but also on a number of other levels. Their lean processing is fantastic. I'm excited to see their old facility get brought into the new facility and how that's structured. But they've also been an ally to us in the workforce housing discussion. They've done tremendous work in that area, and so they're an ally to us there. So they're helping in more ways than just creating jobs.
One of these days, we should get Gary to do like a scale, an image scale of what can be designed. I've talked about this before. When I went out there, I don't remember what the machine was, Nick, maybe you can tell me. It was some kind of a laser cutter that created a bicycle that was like this, smaller than a quarter and is thinner than an actual, like, coin. And then, of course, there was a train car out back. Okay, we can go from something this little to something that big in this facility. I don't think you realize, like, what's going on out there.
Yes.
It's, it's really remarkable. And I was also impressed by the number of local buyers. When I toured that facility, the number. When I toured that facility, the number of field sprayers and other farm agriculture devices that were being manufactured there, going to farms in our community, which means it's affordable locally, which is really important. So, thank you for what you do out there and please pass on our thanks to Gary and team.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve a resolution approving a rural industrial prop- property tax exemption for GK Machine Incorporated.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Connie, say hi to Gary for us.
We will.
All right. Under Health and Human Services, we're gonna hear from Ryan Matthews on a couple of items. The first one is a purchase order with the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Department of Human Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Matthews Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services, and I am here to request a reimbursement in the amount of $299,650 that would come from Marion County Health and Human Services to Oregon Health Authority. Now, you will note that this is not the normal way money flows. So this is a slightly unusual request and, and so I wanna give a little bit of background of, as to how we got here. So, the way we are paid by Oregon Health Authority for our Behavioral Health Services is we are given kinda, we have a contract total and we're paid a 1/12, well, I guess over the course of the biennium, it'd be 1/24th, you know, every month. And then at the end of the contract period, there is provision in the contract for a settlement and reconciliation of those funds and which, because of the nature of the fact that the counties are always front-loaded, we, we are paid the full contract amount. If there's anything that needs to be recovered, it, it would be a payment from the county back to Oregon Health Authority. You'll note that the date range here is 2017 through 2019. So this is the 2017 and 2019 biennium, which is, you know, a long time ago, when, if we kinda think about it that way. And that kinda speaks to the, kinda what's sort of clunky about this process. You'll, you'll see my next topic. You'll, you'll see how the Public Health Division kinda reconciles more in the moment. But on the behavioral health side, we tend to go many, many years not sort of hearing any status update on where we are in terms of being able to close out our biennium contract and make any kind of final adjustments to the, to the payment amount. We just finally received the information from 2017-19. When we looked at our, at our contract, we had set aside funding that we did not spend that was associated with this grant period because we needed to hold it just in case this settlement, the amount, the settlement amount needed to be negotiated and we wanted to have those funds to be able to process this repayment when the time came. So what this will actually end up doing is resulting in a payment to Oregon Health Authority for the 299,000 that we owe them for money that we didn't utilize, that they paid us. And then there's some additional funding that we are allowed to retain and reinvest in our Behavioral Health Services going forward. And we no longer have to hold those as restricted funds that we can't touch. We can now shift those in the next budgeting cycle into operational funds and we can use those to continue to fund the services that we provide or potentially enhance the services we provide. And so, we're excited to kinda move past this. This does still speak to the fact that there's the 2019, 2021, and 2021, 2023 bienniums that we haven't, you know, reconciled yet, but one, one step at a time at this point. And so we're seeking approval to be able to process this reimbursement, close out this, this contract period and, and then move forward. So.
Thanks, Ryan.
I don't know if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I do wanna clarify though, that this isn't our reconciliation issue. This is OHA and ODHS's reconciliation issue. And I think it is a complete and utter disservice to our customers who have pretty great needs right now in the behavioral health system of care to have money sitting on a shelf, literally not being acknowledged because they can't get their finance department in order. When I learned about this yesterday, I, I got to thinking about the fact that every one of our communities has been crying out for some type of a crisis since I've been on this commission. And they all fall within behavioral health, whether it's mental health or addiction. And obviously, you've heard about a lot of addiction challenges. The dollar amount that we're returning, which is just under $300,000, seems like a splash in the bucket. And there are several organizations in our community that we could be partnering with to bring services online or provide extension of service to those in need that we can't because this money is shelved. It's, it's so frustrating to me that, that we're even here. And this is from 2017. Like you said, we still have three other, or at least two other biennias that they need to get through. So what, in five years, we'll get to one more and then five years later? So within a 10-year timeline.
Well, I was gonna say, you've been a commissioner for five years, you've hit one. So, you know, so I mean, at this, at this pace, you know, maybe in five more years, we'll have the, the 2019, 2021 biennium. So it is really, you know, it's one of those things where I, I mean, I realize, you know, people have to reallocate resources and there's, you know, multiple, all the counties across the state that they would have to do these reconciliations. But it just speaks to sort of some ineffi- you know, when people think about inefficiency of government, it's things like this where you think there, there has to be a way to streamline this, to get the money reconciled in a timely manner, to be able to allow the legislature, whoever else would then, you know, have access to these funds to say, well, how would we wanna appropriate those going forward? Cuz you know, what happens when these get returned to OHA?
Well, really what it is, is that it's an unawareness of information to the legislature who's trying to claw back money from agencies that haven't spent those funds. They do it towards the end of every biennium. Those agencies are told to give back unspent dollars. This, in theory, is allocated funding, so the legislature doesn't see it as unspent because they don't have that education. I can assure you that by the end of the month, they will have that education because I'm pretty motivated to bring it to Senator Lieber's attention as the Ways and Means Chair. I, I think it's inappropriate. And while I know that she can't like wave her magic budget wand to fix it, I do think it's something that they should pursue, is money sitting on the shelf for Oregonians that's under, underutilized. And regardless of what it was designed for originally, it's just sitting there and it needs to be working for us. Because I don't want them to raise my taxes when there's literally money just sitting around.
Well, there needs to be accountability for all dollars. So yeah, there should be accountability. Whatever recruitment that OHA has, there should be accountability to like what, what happens with those dollars? Where do they get?
And we know what happened. We know we can do it because we do it. We know they can reallocate and they can do all of the auditing that they need to do because we have to do it as a county government.
Right.
Maybe they should take your model and deploy over there at OHA. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox.
You did great.
Doesn't even have any soap.
I fully support the Congress.
I'm ready for a motion, Madam Chair. I'll move that we approve the purchase order with the Oregon Health Authority, Oregon Department of Human Services in the amount of $299,650 for the reimbursement of unutilized funds for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
You said it all.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 17 for an approval of amendment number 15 to incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with OHA.
All right. So, once again, Ryan Matthews Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services. So now, this is the other side of the coin. So same organization, different division. But on the Public Health Division, the reconciliation process is much more timely. Part of that is because the way the contract is structured, it's a reimbursement-based contract where they sort, they pay us for expenses as we go. And it also has some more reporting requirements than on the behavioral health side. But this, this amendment is actually making an adjustment from, so there's $120,206.28 that we're decreasing in funding for fiscal year 23-24. And these are COVID dollars that were not spent, not utilized last fiscal year. And because the contract is an individual year instead of over the course of a whole biennium, they basically have to reduce our contract in 23-24 to be able to reappropriate those funds in the current fiscal year. So they're taking that $120,000, they're reducing it in the last fiscal year because we didn't spend it, and they're reappropriating it in the current fiscal year to make it available for us to utilize in fiscal year 24-25. So the net overall impact to our biennium contract is, is no change, but it's a shift from, from year to year. So it's a bit of an accounting process for, for this particular amendment, but it also sort of speaks to sort of a, a more detailed process for how they're reconcili- reconciling these funds and how they're tracking from year to year where they go. So we don't have a situation like we have on the behavioral health side where they're back in 2017 trying to reconcile things like this. This happens as the, the years close out, as they get final end of year reports and they make those adjustments in the moment. And so it's, feels a bit more timely and, and it allows us to utilize these funds if, if we're eligible to carry them over in a, in a more timely fashion. So, so this is, it's interesting, same organization, much different process just based on the different divisions. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve amendment number 15 to the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to decrease funding in the amount of $120,206.28 for program elements PE 110, OIP CARES, and PE 43-5, OIP Bridge COVID, for a new contract total of $16,627,512.29, retroactive to November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, now we'll move on to Public Works. Andrew Johnson's gonna join us regarding an approval of the Standard Support Services and Licensing Agreement Paradigm Software.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Andrew Johnson with Marion County Public Works, here today to ask for approval on an IT service agreement with Paradigm Software for a new solid waste management system. So at our various different solid waste sites, we have a, a software system that runs the transactions for the customers and then we gather that data and that populates all of our accounting system and also our DEQ reporting system. The current system we're using is a proprietary system that's outdated. It's very difficult to maintain. We started a process for replacing this system roughly eight years ago, working with many different contractors and consultants. We put it out to bid in 2023 and Paradigm Software was a successful bidder. And so we're here today to ask for approval on this IT service agreement. This is for a five-year agreement. Total maximum not to exceed compensation for this agreement is $380,776.70. That includes the licensing for the software and also all the different online cloud systems and memberships to that, subscriptions to that.
Andrew, is this a three-year with a two-year option to extend?
It's a, it's a five-year and then with an option for a five-year to my understanding, so.
Okay. That's not really the practice. I'm not sure how we missed that in management update, but our practice is three years with the option of over two to get to a five because we wanna make sure that we really like what we're buying.
Gotcha.
And also, if we wanna go out to an RFP, we have the flexibility of doing that. I'm not, I don't remember if I was in management update when this came about, but could you just verify and let me know after the fact?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you want us to, uh?
I don't, I mean, I-
Approve this contract? Or do you want us to wait until?
Well, I don't wanna hold it up because I know it's been, it's something in the making, but I, I do wanna make sure, mostly what I wanna make sure is that we have an out at any point in that five years.
We do have an out within the five years, yes.
Okay. And then just going forward, if you could please just manage that practice.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it. All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Yes, I know. Commissioner Cameron, I'll take a motion.
I was just looking to see where.
I don't have that section of the document, I don't think.
Oh, well, I'll go ahead and approve it. I was trying to answer your question specifically in the contract, but we can get out of it anytime we need to. All right, I will ask that we move approval of the Standard Support Services and Licensing Agreement with the Paradigm Software LLC in the amount of $380,776.70 to provide and implement a new Public Works Environmental Services, Gates and Solid Waste Management System with the term date of five years from execution.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Andrew. All right, now we're gonna move on. Greg, you are here to consider approval of the Incoming Funds Homeland Security Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Energy. Emergency management. I read that. My mind, energy, I guess, is where I'm stuck.
Thank you. Good morning, Greg Walsh from Marion County Emergency Management. So this is the, one of the great benefits that we get to do for our county and our communities is actually using some of the funding that we are provided through the State Homeland Security Grant Program, which is a federal grant, so we are tracking all of that and in contact with Oregon Emergency Management as to the future of that with what's going on right now. That being said, this grant is gonna provide us an opportunity to continue a project that we started last year and continue to support over the next several years with the intent of providing an emergency operations plan for each of our cities. Previously, Marion County did this in, between 2009 and 2012. And most emergency operations plans, we look to be updated every three to five years, just to make sure that they're current, up to date. With this, we are basically supporting all of those communities through a professional contracted plan service and with Marion County Emergency Management directly involved to ensure key stakeholders and best practices are applied as we develop new emergency operations plans for each of the cities in Marion County. So, this, this phase will include Woodburn, Sublimity, Gates, Mill City, Turner, Kaiser, Mount Angel, Silverton, and Almsville. So we have already had conversations with a lot of these communities. They're excited. They're bringing their key stakeholders together already to support thi- this planning op- oper- excuse me, planning effort. And we are currently wrapping up the completion of Hubbard, Stateon, Jefferson, and Detroit from this, the original phase of this.
Thanks, Greg. Do you have any questions?
We covered the management update.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Incoming Funds Homeland Security Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management in the amount of $121,345 for emergency operations planning services for cities throughout Marion County through September 30th, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll just say that I appreciate that you're bringing this along and the communities probably really appreciate that too. Mayor Longgrin is in the audience. And I hope that you can provide us with some type of an updated report in the next few months and tell us how things are going and introduce any challenges that might exist so we cannot be reactive but proactive in that space.
Of course. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Greg. Yeah, you're out of here. He's like, see ya. Okay. Ryan and Andrew are gonna come forward to, for the approval of the construction contract with Bricks Paving Northwest.
Good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works.
Andrew Johnson, Marion County Public Works.
All right. And as you said, we're here to talk about our North Marion Transfer Station concrete repair. The project's located at the North Marion Con- Transfer Station, which is just north of Woodburn. You can see here on the map where exactly that's located. So the existing conditions, I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew. You can see the wear on the concrete. He'll explain why that's an issue for the operations up there. So.
Isn't that obvious?
So you can kinda see in the bottom right picture that everything, all the material up there gets loaded into 48-yard drop boxes with steel wheels. And then we have to move those boxes around, steel wheels on metal, and then just ends up with a lot of wear and tear. We end up with these big, large spall joints that are, create a lot of damage on both Republic Services boxes and then plus creates damage on our equipment. And it's kinda rough on our operators too. They start bouncing around. So it's part of an unfortunate byproduct of our operation up there. And we, every couple of years, we have to do this to kind of smooth out areas so it's a little bit safer.
All right. So our project's scope includes basically repairing 6,425 square feet of concrete with this project. We're going to replace it with 5,000 PSI concrete, which is stronger than what exists so that our new concrete will last longer. You can see here, this is from the last project that we did that was similar in nature to this. We're up there very early in the morning so that we impact the operations as little as possible. All right, our low bid came in from Bricks Paving Northwest at $139,743.75. They have February and March to do the construction of this project. They'll coordinate with Andrew's team and again, kind of limit the impact as much as we can. Are there any questions on this project?
I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Cameron?
No, I'm hoping it's raining a lot in February and March, but I don't want that to destroy your project.
He hopes it rains for another reason, obviously. He wants to fill-
We need the rain.
Detroit Lake. Okay, there's no other questions. Commissioner Cameron, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the construction contract with Bricks Paving Northwest Inc. in the amount of $139,743.75 for the concrete floor repairs, North Marion Ca- Marion Recycle and Transfer Station through December 31st, 2026.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan, let's talk about construction with Emery &amp; Sons.
All right. Thank you again. For the record, Ryan Cruther with Marion County Public Works. And this time, I'm here to talk about our Shaft Road ADA Improvements Project. So this project is located, I did not catch that typo, in Stateon, not Salem.
Oh, I was like, wow.
So on the map, it shows the correct location. But, so we're located on Shaft Road in Stateon. We have three intersections we're focusing on with this project. So our existing conditions here, you can see we're missing sidewalk ramps. It creates a barrier for those that are using wheelchairs or other mobility devices. And so we've looked at this as a high-impact area to do these improvements. area to do these improvements. These are photos from our last ADA project. Where, with this project, we're gonna construct 11 new curb ramps, which will meet ADA standards, and then any other, you know, improvements that are required to do those. Sometimes we have to move a catch basin or pave a little ways out into the road to facilitate these repairs. Our low bid came from Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group at $155,598. We expect to construct this winter-spring. I put that in this one just because we don't expect it to take them until June, which is when they need to have the project completed by. The completion date is June 20th, 2025, to give them flexibility to do it when the weather permits and when it fits into their schedule. With that, do you have any questions?
All right.
Questions from me.
Mr. Willis.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the construction contract with Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC in the amount of $155,598. Provide American Disabilities Act improvements on Shaft Road in Staton, Oregon.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks Ryan.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider an amendment to Marion County's comprehensive plan to concur with the city of Woodburn's urban growth boundary for 237 acres of industrial land. You're looking at me like I need to be, you need to gavel out into it?
Should be.
Does somebody want to tell me where the statement is?
It used to be...
It's buried in a bunch of papers. No, it's not your fault. All right, okay, we have a new procedure for public hearings. The board has reviewed the documents contained in the record and has no ex parte communications regarding this matter unless specifically disclosed. If there are any objections to notice jurisdiction or conflicts of interest, the parties can raise them during testimony. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria for the application. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence may preclude appeal on that issue. All right, okay. Hi Austin.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Austin Barnes, Marion County Public Works. Before I go into my staff report, I just wanted to list out the criteria that are pertinent to this decision. Those criteria are the Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapters 197, 203, and 215, the City of Woodburn Comprehensive Plan and Policies, the Marion County Comprehensive Plan Urbanization Element and Policies, the City of Woodburn/Marian County Urban Growth Boundary and Policy Agreement, and finally, the Oregon Statewide Land use Planning Goals and Oregon Administrative Rules Implementing the Applicable Goals. So this matter comes before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at the request of the City of Woodburn for concurrence in and adoption of an amendment to the Woodburn Urban Growth Boundary. The city has held public hearings on the amendments and has adopted an ordinance amending the city's urban growth boundary. Because the city's comprehensive plan is a component of the county's comprehensive plan, and Oregon Revised Statutes 197.0251 gives the county responsibility to coordinate all planning activities with the county, the county must consider whether to concur in the city's amendment. During the city's public hearing process, on the current amendments to its plan, county planning staff communicated with the city staff. County staff had no concerns that needed to be addressed by the city staff. On December 18th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 24R-33 initiating the review process to amend the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting an amendment to the City of Woodburn Urban Growth Boundary and setting a public hearing date of January 29th, 2025 to receive testimony on the proposed amendments. The City of Woodburn is proposing to expand its urban growth boundary by 237 acres to provide industrial land for employment and businesses on the southeastern side of the city. The city recently completed and adopted an economic opportunities analysis, as well as a buildable lands inventory that identified the need for an additional 370 acres of employment land in the city. The plan identified approximately 107 acres for commercial lands and 272 acres for industrial lands. The city identified an area that would help meet this deficit of employment land. The area is known as the urban reserve area and southwest industrial reserve and lies east of Interstate 5 and Butteville Road and north and south of Paul Road. The area is currently unimproved farmland, farmland, and the Union Pacific Railroad runs further to the south. The city went through the process in state statute in Goals 9 and 14. Because the city already designated an area as an urban reserve, it has first priority to be considered in any urban growth boundary expansion. The city's findings support the boundary expansion, the priority of land to be included within the urban growth area, and address Goal 14 factors in the statutory provisions for an amendment of an urban growth boundary to include sufficient lands within the boundary. Urban growth policy is contained in the urbanization section of the Marion County Comprehensive Plan must also be reviewed against the proposal. The city has addressed each policy in their analysis and staff has found their findings to be adequate for the proposal. The city also reached out to landowners who would be brought into the UGB and received letters of support from them. Their submitted materials and hearing minutes show that there are no concerns from landowners about this expansion at the time, and that they're excited to be brought into the UGB. These materials are in the file for review and Woodburn staff can comment further on them. The city determined that the appropriate designation for the properties in its comprehensive plan is the industrial zone. The city proposes to apply a southwest industrial reserve zone once the land is annexed into city limits. After they have been included in the UGB and their designation in the Woodburn Comprehensive Plan has changed to industrial, but until the land is annexed, the city must, or the county must apply an urban zone to the properties consistent with the city plan designation. Chapter 16.13 of the Marion County Code, the Urban Transition Zone states, "The urban transition zone is intended to retain and protect for future urban use properties which are undeveloped or underdeveloped and do not have available urban facilities such as sanitary sewer, water, drainage, and streets. The zone allows the continuation of legally established uses and establishment of uses compatible with the plan designation. In areas planned for development relying on urban services, transitional uses may be allowed, which will not interfere with the efficient later use of the land for planned urban uses. Since the properties are currently undeveloped and not served by City of Woodburn Utilities, applying the UT Zone with a 20-acre density limitation to the properties is consistent with the purpose of the zone. This will allow the land to be held in large chunks to be annexed into the city for future industrial development." Finally, the city has addressed all applicable state planning goals, statutes, and rules in addition to their comprehensive plan policies and Marion County's comprehensive plan urbanization policies. Staff has found their proposal to be compliant with these standards and would recommend approval of the urban growth boundary expansion. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you Austin. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Austin at this time?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to the applicant's report, presentation.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Frank Lonergan, Mayor Woodburn.
Renata Wakely, Special Public Works, or I'm sorry, Special Projects Director and Lead on this application.
So this is kind of a continuation of what we were looking at in 2015 when we expanded our urban growth boundary then.
Pull that mic.
Sorry. So this is a, like I said, a continuation of, of kind of a shortage of land. We were out of buildable land back in, in 2015. We thought we put a 20-year supply together, and it turned out we've used it up in about eight years. So this has caused us to look at our continued growth. We had a, as Austin said, a technical advisory committee that did a fantastic job looking at our future, the type of growth, at what we want, and looked at a continuation of about a 2.3% growth rate in employment for the next 10 years. So running out of land is, is a big issue for us. This 237 acres is certainly gonna help. We're looking at it as, as industrial, and I guess I'll, I'll leave it there. If you have any, any questions, I mean, Austin did a great job covering the, the report and anything that I was gonna say, but...
I would appreciate it if you would go through the process that you engaged with the property owners that are gonna be impacted by this. I, our team did some contact, but I'd like for you to, for the record, tell us what that looks like and...
Take it.
Sure Commissioner. So in 2023, we started the process of an economic opportunity analysis and buildable land inventory to justify, or to determine whether a UGB expansion was justified. At that point, staff reached out to all of the property owners, and we also reached out to those abutting the urban reserve area. So that was just letting them know that we are starting the process to examine how we're doing within our current urban growth boundary. County staff served, as well as DLCD on our technical advisory committee, but we did not have representatives of the property owners on our technical advisory committee. When that process was completed, we counsel-directed staff to initiate the process of a legislative amendment, which we're here for today. City code requires that the city send written notice to the property owners once again for the legislative amendment, and property owners within 250 feet of those property owners. Before sending that legal notice for the legislative amendment, the city also reached out to those property owners once again to just give them a heads up that we are starting the process. So they've been noticed twice. We've received phone calls, kept them informed when the city's holding meetings on this. In addition, the city code requires that we post notice on all of the properties. So it's a 20-day before the hearings are initiated. We had signage on each of the property owners for interested parties that might be driving by. In addition, the requirements for the county, state agencies, Department of Land Conservation, Development, et cetera.
And there was no opposition from any of the landowners?
Correct. We did not have any opposition at all.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just, I'll note that the property owners in the city feel that this is just the next step in, in an agreed-upon process that we've all been aware of since 2015. So there were, property owners were not surprised that we were kicking off the process.
Great. Have any questions for them?
What's the plan for this land, once it comes into the, if it comes into the urban growth boundary?
Industrial site, it'll be, there isn't any definite plan right now. We have developers that are anxious to get to work on it, but they have not informed us of any particular business that's looking to come in yet.
Okay, but it won't be housing, it'll be industrial.
The 2015 agreement stipulates that this will be industrial land. It must have a southwest industrial reserve. Our planning directors here as well, the comprehensive plan and the city's industrial code prohibit rezoning of the property. We have overlays including an interchange management area from ODOT, so this will be industrial employment land.
Great. Commissioner Cameron, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. So we'll carry on. We have one individual signed up for testimony and support, Daniel Mullen. Go ahead and come up here to this front. Right on my glasses. Hello sir.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Dan Mullen here. I am a, a abutting property owner, right on the, I'm landlocked by the freeway. And so I, depending on what hat I wear, I like straight lines and all that, so I support Mayor Lonergan and where they're heading with this. And I had the opportunity to meet with him, Counselor Cantu and Commissioner Willis one day, and we had a conversation about this piece of property. Thousand Friends of Oregon, back in 2015, they, they said nothing west of Butteville Road. Makes complete sense if you're on the north of the Butteville Overpass. But where I'm at, I'm landlocked, and there's only about 60 acres that's landlocked by the freeway and what they've taken in. I just ask that, hearing said course opportunities, whether it be via the county, kind of like we're doing in the Donald Interchange, City of Woodburn, that someday we might have the consideration as well for an opportunity for that piece of property to also create more economic development in the area.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here. Just for clarification, your testimony in regards to this though, is that you're in support of the action that we're gonna ask to take. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
And I also want to clarify, and, and the land that you own is not going to be, is not a part of this, correct?
Negative, I'm directly across the street, so what they're taking in literally is across the street, but because of that line established from Thousand Friends, in the freeway, I'm stuck.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Before we move on, is there anyone else in the audience that wants to provide testimony and support? Please come forward and I'll put you on the list. Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please tell me your first and last name.
For the record, my name is Clayton Madey.
Clayton, spell your last name.
M-A-D-E-Y.
Thank you. And where do you, what's your address?
I live at 12355 Southwest Autumn View Street.
Autumn, like is in the season?
Is in the season, Autumn View, one word.
Thank you. And what city?
Tigard.
Okay.
Tigard, Oregon 97224.
Great, Clayton, go ahead.
Appreciate the opportunity to offer some comments. I, I work as a commercial real estate broker in the Portland metro area, also in Woodburn and Salem. So my testimony today is coming from the standpoint of a, a market participant. And I would just echo that I see a very, very real need for more land in Woodburn specifically, which is a market I work in a lot. Currently working on a 74-acre residential land development project in that market. And then in the state of Oregon in general, we're talking about a large collection of industrial land on I-5, which is effectively a unicorn in, in the I-5 corridor in Oregon. Portland metro cannot accommodate that, Salem metro cannot accommodate that. It's really an opportunity to create an economic driver for a behemoth user. I mean, we've already seen it in that market with Amazon. Hillsborough teed up a site like that many, many years ago. A small company called Intel utilized that site. I mean, this is truly an opportunity to, to drive the economy in the region. We need more land. I mean, we are at a pretty unbelievable scarcity where developers who build industrial product try to lease it to users, but there's so little product that lease rates are always climbing, so we're starting to box out local users who want to lease industrial space to have their business. And so it's not, it's not healthy, we're not at equilibrium. And in my opinion, this is a step toward equilibrium. So I, I think we're still at a deficit even if this happens, but just from my own perspective, dealing with these landowners, sellers, developers, users, every single day in my professional life, I, I see the need desperately. So just wanted to offer that, that background.
Great, thanks for being here and thanks for your testimony. Okay, is there anybody that is here to provide testimony and opposition? Okay, great, moving on from public testimony. Commissioners, do you have anything additional for Austin or anything else?
I don't have any questions for Austin.
Okay.
I just want to make sure before I make this motion that I got the right motion, Austin, in legal counsel. So the, the motion that I want to make, if you're ready for that, Madam Chair, it sounds like we are.
I am.
Is to amend the Marion County's Comprehensive Plan to concur with the City of Woodburn's Urban Growth Boundary for 237 acres for industrial land.
Sounds correct to me.
That's my motion.
I will second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you everybody for the extensive amount of work done here.
Before you close the public hearing, Madam Chair, it's good to see you.
All of you, in general?
Everybody. Sorry for the long delay, you know, we, we have these long board sessions, but Renata, I think you said 2015, but I, I believe it was almost 20 years before that. This, this is, this started like in 2000 or 2001, and I know it was one of the first things that, when I got here, I went, what are we doing? It's taken that long to bring in all this property into the urban growth boundary in Woodburn. And you can see the growth that's happened, the, the housing that it's allowed people, the jobs it's allowed people, and it's, it's a great location in the mid, while I'm at Valley, and we're honored to be representing you as Marion County Commissioners and what you're doing up there. So thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner. And I should cover more of your...
Sorry Mayor, would you like to come forward to the microphone? Because you know, we're televised and folks like to hear you.
I do the same thing.
I know, it's okay.
Thank you Commissioner Cameron, I greatly appreciate that. We, Woodburn is, we knew at some point that it was gonna happen. And you're right, we started in the early 2000s and it took a long time to get that through. And it's continuing. At least, we're doing it smart. We have the infrastructure, we're planning, right, the, the traffic, water, everything. So we see a, a big future for Woodburn. But also, I was thinking, I should come to more of your meetings. You did a lot for Woodburn today, in several areas. So we're glad that we're in the forefront with you, so.
We really appreciate you and the leadership that you provide to the city of Woodburn. It's been a great collaboration. Since I've been a Commissioner, if I could ask you or staff, that as this moves forward, if you could keep it surprised, as to what the growth is going to look like, I think one of the things that we hear, I don't think, I know one of the things that we hear most is representatives of the county, is that residents don't know where to go to be informed. They don't know how to engage, they don't even know what they're hearing half of the time. Like I guarantee people that are watching this today are trying to figure out what it is we even just did. The education on how government functions isn't like readily available, like how a law becomes... The education on how government functions isn't like readily available, like how a law becomes, a bill becomes a law type of a thing. And I know that there's pretty interested and also vulnerable community members across the community of Woodburne, in the city and out of the city, that have concerns about growth. And, you know, I never want to fault the friends of anyone for the investment of time and energy that they put into protecting our farmland. I'll tell you that when I first saw this application, my initial reaction was like, nope. You know, we need to be able to protect that farmland. But once I got into the weeds of it, I understood not just the long process, like that's important, but what's important is that we're really supporting a sustainable economic environment for the people who live in the area. I do think you're doing a really good job up there.
Thank you. Historically, this has never been prime farmland.
Right.
Even where Emory was, it's pretty hard to claim.
I think that's the point, is that like, I'm a county commissioner, and I have access to really smart people where I can call and say, tell me why I shouldn't be concerned about this. The average resident doesn't know who to call, and it's not readily available to them. And so we can always do better by providing as much information in the public space for people to understand why we're making these decisions, and it's not done in haste, and that it really is for the greater whole. And I just, you're very available as a mayor. Like, I...
Try to be.
It's to be commended. I'm really grateful for the time that you spend with the citizens and that every time we call you, you show up in the space and you provide that interaction. It's really important. So thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, with nothing else, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back into regular board session. I have nothing additional on the agenda.
Then you should be a hero.
I should be a hero. I'm a hero every day, let's be real. I'm a grandma. Okay, well, meeting adjourned.